I pledge allegiance to the guard of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no review and justice for all.
All right, morning.
Good morning.
Call meeting to order. A motion for agenda approval, no additions or corrections please, anything come in?
The move second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I oppose. Next from the previous meeting.
I approve them, they look good, so I make the motion.
Aye. Sorry, I'll second. Uh, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, next approved. General public concerns. Don't have any teleconference Zoom thing going on, I don't see it in the public. So, hearing none, we'll move on. Curious if Scott might go early?
Not a problem. People passing around, you got a round? Great. Maybe you want extra copy here, else I might have this one just about taken from you. Did you take one maybe?
You have one?
I didn't call for one, sorry.
I didn't know. Let me tell you, you have a copy.
I think there should be an out. I think I made a mistake. Just so I didn't need to pay you out.
That's okay, we just paid you out.
Yeah. Well, we do prepay that.
That's why I didn't want to have to pay you out.
Appreciate that.
Yes, no problem.
You do have your copy.
Okay. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to go over our annual insurance review. Uh, we have July first insurance renewal date and wanted to...
It feels like July is coming up on us, right? The weather outside feels like July.
Yeah, it's like July.
July first is the bonus. Um, so I just wanted to go through the basics with you, um, and then give a general recap of where things are at sitting premium wise and some of the reasons for those changes. Okay, so, um, first page you'll see under property coverage, um, our property is insured on a blanket basis. You'll see in there, under the premises and just coverages, it just has various buildings uh, under a blanket and that's on a statement of values. So, our total coverage for the county with buildings and contents is seventeen million three hundred and seven thousand. Uh, that's on a replacement cost basis, that's the RC under the next column over. We have a thousand dollar deductible and cause and losses special, which is just the broadest coverage payroll form that's available to the county. There's a, there's a basic, there's a broad, and there's a special. So, we're on the special form with that. Uh, then just under the endorsements section, there's a governmental property agreement, um, there's an enhancement endorsement that throws in some bells and whistles, and, um, we have weather equipment breakdown coverage as well there. And then there's, uh, the statement of values, which I'll share with, um, Ben and Todd, you know, those guys have the bulk of the property with their secondary roads, buildings, and the different conservation shelter houses and things of that nature, just for their review, um, on that for those schedules. Okay? Next is our crime section, um, we have a two hundred thousand dollar employee dishonesty per loss, that's on a blanket schedule, that's what that B stands for there as well. So, what that does is provides, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, you know, worth of any, um, whether it's dishonesty from taking equipment, selling it on eBay, that kind of thing versus monetarily. And then we do have, uh, an additional bond that's outside of our ICAP policy for the elected official positions as well. And then there's ten thousand dollars for money securities, you know, for that's inside the office and outside the office, so that's for our departments that do maybe take in some cash or something like that, whether somebody comes in and demands that or grabs them while they're getting out of their car on the way to make a call, you know, so that's whether it's on premises or off premises. Okay? Uh, next section should be general liability, public officials and law enforcement. Shows our basic coverage level of two million dollars for any occurrence, um, and then that's whether it's, uh, and then the general aggregate's two million dollars, so that's just, general aggregate's basically our policy of July first to July first, and then we have an occurrence of two million dollars. There's a ten thousand dollar medical expense limit, and that's sort of a no questions asked coverage if somebody gets hurt on county property, um, and we don't have really any negligence for that, or we weren't really contributory to it. Policy still allows ten thousand dollars, that's kind of a good nature, go get stitches, go get an X-ray, and maybe that settles everything down and everybody's happy versus trying to grumble and generate a lawsuit of things of that nature. If that does happen, then of course we have defense on behalf of the county, and if for some reason we were found negligent or contributory to the, to the accident, then that's where our per occurrence of two mil, of two million dollars comes into play. And then you'll see later we have excess coverage over the top of this, this is just our base coverage. This will be the first policy that we respond. Uh, and then there's, you know, we have other things underneath there, employee benefits coverage, um, employment practices coverage, and employment practices will be things such as wrongful termination, discrimination, um, sexual harassment, those kind of things within the workplace. And you'll see that that does carry a deductible. Generally, liability as it stands, under the occurrence level, there is no deductible. Um, so if we were found negligent for somebody getting injured at Gosh Park or something like that, uh, we would pay first dollar on those types of things. But you'll see on those ones towards the bottom, there are certain deductibles when you get into our public officials E and O, law enforcement E and O, employment practices, those kind of things do have a deductible and those are noted there. Okay? And the same with public officials liability, two million dollars, law enforcement, two million dollars, and the excess liability that we'll see later goes over the top of these. And these, the classifications that I have down below are just a few of the extra classifications. They have kind of a base liability that comes to a lot of county activity, but then there are a few things that have additional liability charges, if you will, and those are things like the dams that we maintain or are in charge of, campgrounds, the, uh, jail, and then, you know, fishing piers, a humble problem there. So, um, any questions on that? We'll flip over to the auto, should be the next page. Again, our business auto limit is two million dollars for any one accident that we would be responsible for, cause, and that's bodily injury and property damage, so any bodily injury would do to anybody, or property damage to other vehicles or buildings. Um, from our automobile accident, we have up to two million dollars here, and the excess policy does go over that as well. Uninsured motorist, seven million dollars, therefore, if we're not the cause of the accident, somebody else is, but they, they don't have insurance, we have access to uninsured motorists as well. Our comprehensive collision deductibles are two fifty and five hundred respectively for those vehicles, and most of our vehicles, I think there's only two vehicles on the whole schedule that are liability only, so most of our vehicles do have both coverage. And the savings at the bottom, um, I just checked, you know, what savings would be if we looked at a thousand dollar deductible, and it doesn't really benefit, in my opinion, the county much for three hundred and twenty.
Not only that many vehicles.
No.
Yeah, correct, and that's just one claim. I mean, it could be one claim in one year, you've already lost your savings there.
Yeah.
And then just the other note there at the bottom, the endorsements, the hired and non-owned auto liability is included in this. Where that's important is if a county employee or public official is using their own vehicle to attend a meeting, um, they're not driving a county vehicle. If they got into an accident or caused an accident while they're en route or on, you know, county business time, their own automobile insurance comes first because they're driving their own car. So, their policy comes first. Obviously, the county isn't going to ask them if you pay a premium or what their levels are or limits before they're taking off for these meetings. So, if they do cause a bad accident and maybe find out that they, they didn't have a policy, or maybe they had minimum limits that the state requires, and the accident's going to require much more than that, and so lawsuits are involved, attorneys figure out they're on county, going to a county meeting, they bring the county in, well, then this is what protects us. We have coverage for any non-owned vehicle that was used on our behalf, or anything that's hired, a rented car. That's where the hired and borrowed come versus the non-owned, that's the difference. They rented a car because they had to fly somewhere. Equipment floater, um, is the next section. That kind of, uh, is, is more of a, we have some unscheduled equipment and scheduled equipment, and there's some other computer hardware coverage, virus protection and things like that that are built into there as well. And you can see down there in the middle under our scheduled equipment, so the unscheduled equipment will be a lot of the small tools that go out and about, you know, five hundred dollar items and less and those kind of things. We get some built-in unscheduled equipment. We have a pickup or a trailer that loses some of those items in an accident. And then our bigger equipment is what's under our schedule, and you'll see we have over four million dollars worth of scheduled equipment. Those are things, a lot of secondary roads type of equipment, backhoes, um, motor graders, those kind of things. Dump trucks and things like that are on an auto schedule, these are things that generally don't need a license plate on, a lot of your construction equipment. Uh, you'll also find that that's where, um, skaters, side-by-sides, that conservation might have, police, emergency management, those kinds of things. And then communications equipment, that's kind of a separate little EVP thing, that's our big Motorola project that we invested in down there behind LEC when we upgraded our communications equipment, we got nearly nine hundred thousand dollars earmarked for that. Thousand dollar deductible on those kind of things. And then just a few little bells and whistles down below, we have leased and rented equipment coverage for fifty thousand, so if we do ever need to get a different piece of equipment for a temporary project or something, renting a high lift, for instance, or some other intricate piece of equipment, we have fifty thousand dollars built in, so if we're, we damage that and the rental company's going to want to hold us responsible, we've got that. And that can certainly be increased, so know if we get into something where we rent an eighty thousand dollar piece of equipment or something like that, you can trust to have that temporarily booked up. Next section, workers' compensation. Um, this is through IMWCA, so IMWCA and ICAP work together. ICAP provides the package, if you will, for the property, the liability, the equipment, the autos, and then IMWCA provides our workers' compensation coverage. And that has a million dollar limit for employer's liability, and, um, employer's liability is not the medical indemnity side thing. Medical indemnity and any kind of disability payment because of a work-related injury is unlimited in the policy. So, if somebody gets hurt severely and they need, um, several surgeries and rehab and that is over a million dollars, that's fine. It's unlimited as far as the medical side and the indemnity side, so if it also, um, loses the use of their arm or their leg, they're going to get a permanent disability or a partial disability payment, and those are certainly unlimited. This is it. In rare circumstances where the county can be sued by an employee, this is the million dollars that we have available for that kind of a thing. And that's very rare circumstance because state law, state statute says, where we're required or responsible for our workers' injuries, therefore, they limit what an employee... Basically, the workers' compensation is designed to be a sole revenue to the employer. They can't take their indemnity or their payment and then turn around and make a suit. Very rare circumstance, gross negligence, you know, something, somebody tells the supervisor five times that this piece of equipment's needing repair, but they don't repair it and it blows up on, that could be a case, but just your general run-of-the-mill accidents, um, workers' compensation's a sole revenue. So, uh, going down the list, our experience modification, um, did creep up again this year, but I think we're at the top, so, I mean, it's what's nice is, the bad part is we've kind of crept up over the last couple of years, but the nice thing is we're still at, we're not above one, we're at one, so what that experience modification means, one is basically the base rates. And if there's a, either a company or a county, I mean, it works the same way whether you're downtown business, manufacturing, or a public entity. If you have very bad experience with your workers' compensation claims, you're going to get a modification factor that's above one, and that just means you're going to, the base rates, whatever that is, if it's one point one, you're going to get charged ten percent above the base rate, surcharge. Um, if you get below one because you have good experience, wherever you are below one, if it's point nine five, you're a five percent credit applied to your insurance. So, the nice thing is we're not, I, I perceive as being at the peak here because, um, the, the la, our last two years, experience mod is based on three years of your last, the oldest three of your last one. And those oldest two that we have out there are the two big ones. So, next year, one of those big ones is going to roll off as long as we can replace it, which I think we're replacing with something better coming up, um, and then the same the following year. So, hopefully, if we right the ship, we'll be heading in another direction. So, we're just basically at base rates, it crept up from point ninety-eight to one. Um, our sixteen percent premium discount is, is there, and that's just for longevity, um, and being an ICAP or a IMWCA, remember they give some, some premium volume credit, which is higher premium credit, and then longevity credit. Uh, so then that discounts our premium down by seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The IMWCA good experience credit, we lost that other eight percent, that's, I have the zero over there on the dollar column, I forgot to move, but last year we were at eight percent, the year prior we were at seventeen percent. So, what happens is, as your experience mod goes closer to one, you start also losing your good experience credit, so we lost half of it last year from seventeen to eight, and then now we lost the other half. If we get below, and that starts adding back on as, as you get below point nine five. So, as we get back down, we start driving our mod factor down, we get below point nine five, we're going to roll on some additional credits, so it's kind of a double whammy effect. As your mod factor goes up, you not only get, you lose some of those mod factor credits, you also lose your good experience credit. And as we start going the other direction, we're going to gain a double benefit of that credit because our experience mod's going to start crediting our base rates, and we're going to get good experience credit.
So, that gives us the reason to continue to preach safety.
That's right. Yeah, safety meetings, safety meetings, and preaching safety to the guys because, um, it definitely is a driver on costs.
Do the insurers provide like training, because one of their workers didn't pass up, provided training?
Certainly. Yeah, if they want, if, if they, uh, if we earmark somebody, what they like to see is a, a, a safety coordinator designated in the county, whether that's somebody from secondary roads, whether that's emergency management, whoever, you know, Terry or whoever that's going to be, and then they will facilitate any kind of safety meetings, but then IMWCA will come in and provide materials, provide support, you know, things of that nature to help. You know, if they want to provide a topic, hey, we want to work on heavy equipment safety today, you know, or whatever, they can provide all kinds of materials, if they want to police, um, safety, you know, or whatever, that kind of thing.
We should use them, you liking that.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, and so, you know...
I've used it in the past, but it's a really good benefit.
Right. And what, like I said, what they like to see is, is a, a coordinator of some sort, so if we do have that in place, then the coordinator can contact me, I'll get them in touch with the proper people and they can take it from there.
Good. Ben is our coordinator.
Ben, okay, yeah, so I work with Ben on that, and we can go from there. Um, so you can see there on, uh, the net total is at ninety-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. And what that is, we'll see that at the end here, but I'll just give you some, some of it right now, that's an increase over the prior year on work comp of six thousand thirty-five dollars. The year prior, we were up twenty-two thousand, I mean, so that's when we were, we took a pretty big jump the year prior. We, our mod factor didn't change quite as bad as it did the year prior. And not all the six thousand, it means part of it is our payroll is up, just like it would be with most any other with raises and things, our payroll is up forty-one thousand three hundred dollars. So, that plays into it too, the more payroll, the more cost. And our mod factor changed by two percent, we lost that eight percent good experience credit, but like I said, uh, because next year we'll have, um, the prior year we only had, we had less than thirteen hundred dollars in claims the prior year coming on. So, that's why I say, but we're going to be rolling off something that's in the, either the forty, forty thousand, fifty thousand dollar range, replacing it with something thirteen hundred, because then I think our, our formula is going to be a little more favorable. All right, so any questions on that before we jump to the next page? Umbrella, this is our excess coverage, which goes over the top of our general liability, uh, goes over the top of our automobile liability. We have currently four million dollars, so with our base liabilities at two million, and this adds another four, we have basically six million dollars at our disposal for any type of claim. Um, down below you'll see the increase, what it would take to increase the umbrella of the excess coverage by six, uh, million dollars each, each increment. So, to go from four to five million would be one thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. Go from four to six, you know, it's, it's basically right around that thirteen ninety-five each, each layer. So, there you can see if you say, well, yeah, maybe it's time to look at an additional layer, get us to five million, get us to six, and then, so then you'll, you'll be going from a combined six to seven, or a combined, uh, six to eight million, because you put your two million dollar base on top of each one of those. Okay? Then the last is just our premium recaps, uh, for the year prior to this year, and you can see the prior year, it's roughly right around nine thousand, ninety-seven hundred dollars difference, so. Um, and in the categories that changed, the business auto, we had a slight two hundred dollar change there. That's attributed to conservation and secondary roads both got new pickups last year, they ended up getting twenty-twenty's, uh, pickups. Um, equipment floater had a decent change here, uh, fourteen hundred dollars or so. Again, secondary roads last fall, they got a new lower backhoe and two new motor graders, and those two new motor graders are three hundred and someone thousand apiece, so there's a lot of property coverage added to that equipment section for secondary roads there. Um, liability, down slightly, a few hundred dollars down. Property section, another one up around a thousand dollars, but that's, every time and every year for our property, we're going to have standard inflation adjustments because we're on a replacement cost policy. So, labor and materials generally are going to increase every year, so if we're going to be responsible for replacing structures that are damaged, they add a three percent inflation to each of the building values, which obviously you're going to have more coverage in the end. And then also, conservation added the two new cabins out at Sheldon Park. Those were around eighty thousand apiece, so there's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of coverage that was put on the models. Umbrella was down just slightly. Work comp, we already addressed that, and the E and O and law was down just slightly as well, so there's a few categories that were down a few hundred dollars. And then the other difference was our, uh, credit voucher, our cumulative reserve fund. Um, what that is, is ICAP, the rates are always set based on what, what actuarially is sound, they have actuaries and statisticians that says, you know, here's the law of large numbers on what claims, expected claims should be. So, those premiums are based on their calculations. Then as a whole, as all the ICAP members, um, as a whole, if we have good experience as a collective group, that goes, you know, just goes into a reserve fund, just like anybody else's budget, if you don't spend your budget, it goes into a reserve fund, well, then what ICAP Board of Supervisors or Board of Directors has done is saying, we're going to pro read portions of that reserve back, give it as a dividend, if you will, back to our members in proportion to the contributions that they pay. So, that is, that will fluctuate each year, you know, as that, we have, you know, stormy years or whatever that eat up a lot of the premiums, reserve funds the next year are probably going to be less than, if we have a really quiet year, you know, so and so. So, that one was just down, we had, you know, ninety-two hundred last year, we're at seventy-eight hundred this year, so, uh, that just comes off as a credit off the bottom. Any questions on that? Otherwise, that's what I wanted to give you was a report. Um, I emailed Peggy, she's probably sitting in your inbox when you get back to your desk.
Already sent.
Already sent. So, every year I go through the schedules, the automobiles, the property, break it out by department, and give Peggy that breakdown so that she can give it to the department heads to pay their equal share of the overall premium. And that contribution credit or that cumulative reserve credit is split proportionately amongst each of the departments as well. So, um, the other thing that I wanted to give that just came in, um, we applied for the last several years, ICAP has done a safety grant, and it's up to a thousand dollars that you can put in a simple application for any kind of safety equipment, uh, things of that nature, and they can reimburse up to a thousand dollars, so that was submitted, and we got, we submitted nine hundred and twenty-five dollars worth, so we still have seventy-five bucks available, what we want, but that check is attached.
I've been watching for it.
Yep, there it is. Otherwise, um, there's nothing else.
I have a question.
Yes.
On those cabins.
Yes.
When we have campers go out to the parks, they're bringing their own stuff out there, do we need to put, and I'm assuming you would talk to conservation, but do we need signage out there so we don't have someone putting a burn pit or something hanging in the inside that would start a fire? I mean, this is our property, so I guess, and then we say it's our property, I'm just trying to make sure we have the, everything, our base is covered.
Yeah, that would probably be, you know, certainly a good suggestion, I would say, limiting, trying to put some sort of, you know, hey, we don't want open, open flame inside the cabins or something like that.
No smoking at all, I mean...
Some sage on the back of the door like they, I suppose.
Like in hotels, I guess that's a curious, you know...
That certainly would be wise, you know, because then we can, we would have something that we could come back on and say, you know, because if it's just an accidental fire or something electrical or something gooey like that.
Yeah, like they're cooking something on the stove and they have a...
Yeah, that, you know, that's what we're sure our building's for, but if, if we have given them warning that, hey, we don't want open flame, no smoking, no, you know, burning candles or whatever, we have like this and there, um, and then that causes a fire, then that may give us some leverage to go back and say, okay, your homeowner's insurance or your whatever, we want to try to collect from there.
Right.
So, it certainly wouldn't be a bad idea if there isn't anything out there already.
And the other question was, I know that, um, for like Dean, was it last year we had a pit of deer, one of the deputies? When those cars or when those trucks, some of them, we got Tahos now, most, quite a few of them, those aren't just your average run-out to Humble Motors, your odds of being in and pick up a vehicle, those have the, the radios and all. So, if we have an accident with them, do we, do you guys, is the coverage for moving the radios and stuff, the equipment over, we, we get partial on that too? I mean, some of that help?
Right. That's part, we actually had some of that, I think, in, in one where they have, I forget if it was what accident that was, whether it was a deer or we had a chase downtown and ended up ramming, ramming something there. Where we did, um, as a part of that claim, we had to get into a different vehicle, and as part of that payment, they helped pay to switch the vehicle.
That's what I wondered, all right, thank you.
You can explain it very well.
Yeah, very good. I like what it says that this is covered, some regions are provided here, and tenants out line are necessarily briefed, so that was good.
Yeah.
I think you got to everything that hit the highlights.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do, bring you the highlights. You know, I'll, I'll work with, I was saying, I mentioned the department heads, Ben, Dean, Todd, with their specific schedules to make sure... Todd with their specific schedules to make sure we got what they need as far as, you know, Ben went through a fine-tooth comb last year on secondary roads, gave me a marked copyback, and we actually found some small shed in Rutland that had minor $14,000 coverage, but he said, I don't know where this is, I don't think we have it, so.
You do that once a year, Scott, with everybody?
Yep.
And make sure that they take a hard look at their schedules.
Right. Yeah, because, you know, it's not just building, it's especially Ben's department, you know, they've got several pickups, they've got several.
Make sure we're not missing anything, or we're going to ask something wrong there that shouldn't.
Right. Yes.
Good.
Awesome.
So anything else? Otherwise, we've got a few things we need to sign. One, this one, the commitment to continue membership. So that's just something Eric will sign as chairman, that just says, yeah, the county's committing to continue their membership with the plan. And then this one, this is anniversary acknowledgement that just says that I was here and went through it with everybody from that standpoint. And then the last one is a member of proxy. All this does, we've always had our emergency management, so I've switched that over to put Kerry's name in there. So they're just saying if they're ever wanting to come and do inspections on buildings, you know, and you can, we can designate whoever we want on this, whether Ben be a better person or whoever. We've always had emergency management as our primary contact for loss control, things of that nature. So then they work through there. And then Peggy, Otter's office has always been the secondary. If that's what we want to keep it, if that's what I've got on here, if you can change that, we can change it. So those are the things, I think Eric signs all three, and then Peggy does sign that proxy thing on that, so.
All right.
That one there.
We need to vote for that.
Yeah, you want to approve that before you sign these things.
I'll make the motion to, have Eric, Peggy sign the renewal stuff.
I'll second Dave's motion for the renewal.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those.
All from Kerry. By getting him started earlier, he was, he's way ahead on his day now.
Hold on, he's saying those, can you do the bottom by there, I think?
Take it up and.
Yeah. And this is your.
You got done faster than. I thought I put them in there.
Well, they must be expensive, because I only have the.
Maybe I got a.
Oh, here's one.
And then the top, Peggy signs the bottom by, you're the top by there. And then the top, Peggy signs the bottom by, you're the top by there. Title below that, and Peggy's already got her title, doesn't need it on the top lines.
Did Rick or Dan, this is on behalf of the LEC, mention something about the insurance on the air condition minutes?
Yes, I talked to Rick about it. What we talked is that we, I think the first avenue is to approach the contractor to see what their response is.
There is no response.
There is no response.
John is supposed to have sent them a letter. I can get back to him, because I talked to him about it.
And, you know, so both Dan and, I had the same conversation with Dan, so I should follow up with him to see if the.
Rick said that he wasn't going to send a letter.
Yeah. I'll double check with him today to make sure he sent that letter.
Yeah.
We have a meeting coming up, so we can discuss it, our LEC meeting next week.
Yeah, so what we thought the approach would be to have a letter sent, so we can get a response back from, yes, hey, we'll cooperate, we're going to turn something in, and if they, depending on what response we get back, then we can submit to ICAP and have concerns made there, and then let that, let the channels behind the scenes, you know, ICAP says, hey, we need recovery, then their team can go and press, you know, up there. But kind of the standard operating procedure is to approach direct first and see what kind of response it is. That's all of that.
And I talked to John probably two weeks ago, and I'll go up after a meeting and find out if he got a response, or if he sent the letter, make sure he, make sure he sent it first.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. All right, thank you. The essence of the claims, and I don't think it'll take too long, could we drop down and look for a pool of the claims for this week?
I put through a special claim list this time because of the fact there were so many that came in after last time, and then to wait and put them into July, and then have to accrue them back into June, it's like we probably should just go ahead and pay them. I mean, there were $33,000 worth of claims, so we thought, let's just have an extra claim date and get them through.
Can I make that motion for 33, 701, 72? Is that what we have?
What I got.
Can I make that motion?
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those claims passed. So this is aligned right on the front page? It's usually not on the front page.
Oh, yeah. It is, isn't it?
All right. Get that taken care of. And that was it. Is there anything else in this box that's applicable, Peggy?
I don't think so.
They want to get that. Thank you. Well, it's slightly after nine, so keeping on schedule, kind of our discussion with Ben, basically.
So do we want to go into closed session, Ben?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go into closed session according to 21.5.
Second?
Sandy did.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Both.